Nobody can see us, right?
I keep bothering my laptop.
Oh, yeah.
Are we should be good?
Jerry or or anyone, can you can you hear us in the room?
Jerry's on. I can hear you.
Okay.
Hear you. It's a bit of an echo. Can you hear us?
Yes. Did Jeff have the link, right?
Yeah, I'm on the board.
Yeah, so I'm here, I hear you guys.
And we can hear you a lot better.
All right, great.
To follow up, June 18th, 2020, for the management committee meeting's order, we'll dispense with the pledge because we just set the pledge a while ago. First on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of May 14th, 2020, and May 27th.
So move.
All right.
Barbara, it's hard to hear you.
I'm calling a meeting to order June 18th, 2020, the regular Board of Ed meeting.
I made a motion.
All opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, so we did that. Now can we go on to the approval of minutes?
We did that.
Okay, we did that. Next on the agenda is to approve the claims report of May 2020 and the financial reports.
I made a motion.
A second.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion's carried. The attendance report, all right, I take that last meeting.
So we are coming to the finish line. So much has happened since our last Board of Ed meeting. We have held numerous drive-by and virtual ceremonies to honor our students, including a music award that took place on the front steps in early June, our senior varsity awards that took place on June 10th, having gown ceremonies which were chinned with the seniors, and in particular this year, a video yearbook. So I know Mr. Petretti is on this call, Sean, I just want to ask you to speak a little bit about those ceremonies.
Hello, everyone, how you doing?
Good, Sean.
Good. Yeah, it's been an interesting go the last couple of weeks. I kind of feel like an events coordinator. But, you know, we've been staying busy. There's a lot to celebrate at the end of the year, and we are trying to give every event that we have the justice that, you know, it deserves. I mean, these things are in place for a reason. We're trying to hold to the calendar and keep as much normalcy as possible. But, you know, we, the day of the the yearbook dedication, we stayed with that. You know, a video was done, the students received their yearbooks on on that date. That was last Thursday. We handed out the caps and we used that as an opportunity to hand out the caps and gowns as the students drove through to get their yearbooks. It was great. Linda DiOrio was there to assist us, and it gave the students a chance to say goodbye to her, and it was very nice. You know, they were surprised to see her, and you could just tell how, you know, how much they cared for and how much they were going to miss her by, you know, their reaction to seeing her. It was it was really nice. And then on Monday, which would have been the normal last day of school, we gathered the students, we collected Chromebooks, almost all of them, the seniors' Chromebooks, and then the students that elected to, we put the video yearbook live at 1:30, they watched that, and then we had a sound system out in the parking lot, and we did the senior countdown, which is a tradition that we do on the last day of school every year, where the class president, this year Dylan Marlborough, did a countdown and, you know, did the last couple of seconds there and very well attended, and all the students got to be there, and it was real nice. Real nice. It was bittersweet, to be honest with you, as all these events are now, because we're just not able to do them the way we'd like to. But the participation was good, and I think the students appreciated it. So that's how that's been going.
And this past Monday, Cato East hosted the best car parade ever on the North Shore to honor our sixth graders moving up to junior high, and we had most of the Cato East staff all spread out on the sidewalk, all the way from the first loop of the bus all the way to the end, to celebrate this important milestone for kids. Parents, kids were popping out of windows, the sunroof, all the cars were decorated, so they were screaming with excitement. Dr. Devine can't be here tonight to speak about it, but it was such, you know what, I gotta say, I think we're doing a car parade next year. I'm just saying. Like, I talked about how serious the sixth grade moving up ceremony is, and, you know, it's all dridgy and everybody's, like, trying to get there on time. So many families were out and just having a ball, and just, it was just such a nice thing. And again, they watched their video ceremony afterward. Barbara was able to speak to the kids, myself, Sean stood on the front steps with people moving off, obviously, doing his speech. And what was really nice about the car parade was though Petretti and Mr. Schmidt were here in high school, so the car parade went from Cato East to here, and there are balloons here and everything, and some cupcakes and stuff, so it was a fun day. It was really nice.
And the mascot.
And then we have a new, yes, Cato East mascot that's gonna get some clothes. It was a lot of fun. Today, we started field day at the elementary schools. This is a really big event, it's two days long, and whole entire school set up into blue and yellow teams. They were all posted on the district website. Again, Megan Kepinart, like, went to town on the website and all the events, and she's been working closely with Paul Elwood on setting this up. So we sent home balls to the kids. Mr. Haas helped me, but this, sending balls home to the kids in preparation for field day, we had 500 balls on a school bus. I was crazy, but the kids were there, just couldn't wait to have it.
That's America's consciousness media.
But it was, like, just nice to have so many parents be involved in this now, kids, teachers, you have to post your part of your event, and you gotta work that way, and they're keeping track of the points, I've seen them running today, so it's really nice. If you haven't noticed, I'm asking you and our community driving by this high school and those test courts, the parents of the senior class under the coordination of Jean Horns provided a banner, each child out there, so those banners are not just purchased, those were donated, and parents raised over $4,000 to have that money to create a banner for each and every child in our class. It is an incredible display, these fine young people who have just been in short weeks are going to be off to new experiences, and fortunately, all of them, they have parents, teachers, and a teacher both guiding and supporting them along the way, but we can't wait to see how those things that we're off in, I'm getting a little teary-eyed, but after the vote, after the vote yesterday and Friday, I had to do a quick U-turn, I saw all the banners, and, like, two of the girls were in there, and I called Mr. Petretti, and I was like, this looks amazing, and I knew Mr. Petretti, and Mr. Petretti, and some of the students were able to get it up for showing ceremonies on Monday. So, Sean, thank you so much for taking the time and making sure it was up and fit.
It was my pleasure.
Well done, Sean.
Clear. And also, some of those, like, little, you were able to do a highlight on every child on the left side, so I want to thank President Chapman for helping with that and Sean, and we have the kids. Like, where are they going in September, what are their plans, what's their favorite memory, and just really neat stuff, so I know families, like, are Facebook. But we're happy to announce that we had a first place for Cape Town National Lab winner. And to be able to achieve this, I'm not gonna, this is, we had the kindergarten winner. June Rossetto earned this honor by designing a project about catching bubbles, where he explored qualities that make bubbles pop on dry or wet surfaces. Mrs. Kepinart, I mean, I think she must have sent us a hundred pictures, and she was over the moon to here, and that a kid elevated to this level, and she's like, when have we ever had this, like, did I get that? And then here she's, like, we're so excited, we have kindergarten, she's scrolling through the emails, and if anybody else got another first place, we're like, we'll take the kindergarten winner, we'll take that, we'll accept that. So we were really so happy. Next week, Sean is going to host a virtual award and scholarship ceremony with administrators and staff driving around to the students, and we're, I want to thank Mrs. Finegan for doing the same, through the elementary awards, to students and acknowledge each child along the way, so it was just really so terrific. I want to personally thank Helen Corso, Debbie Hickox, Katie Glugory, Lydia Burns, and Carol Marrow for all the work they've done through the years to create wonderful programs and experiences for student staff and families, and their roles in the PTSA. They're all outgoing parents. Helen Corso has been the president for a number of years, she's just done an incredible job with Debbie, on her side, I know that it's very bittersweet for them to end on this note, but their outreach and their tenure attitude, they were all, they had the ready, no matter what, just coming up with all kinds of things, good for kids. And when I say, like, good for kids, all kids, like, they always were thinking, kind of, this is a fact, each and every. When I came on board, they were around, reached me and partnership, and we set up meetings every six or so weeks, and we've been a great team. They will all be truly missed but not forgotten, some of the programs they put in place over the years will still carry on. Helen ensured that those committees are set up, that she has people in place, and that they're still achieving, I think, created the agendas for the record. So we're going to welcome Amy DeChak and Natalie Tomroy for taking over as co-presidents, and I've already reached out to talk to them a little bit about our. So also, on the agenda tonight is the acceptance of the budget vote and the propositions, and also our new Board of Ed trustees, but I want to thank the community for the support of the budget and the propositions. As you know, we approved the budget, 1,660 to 700, which is really 16% pass rate. With this vote of confidence, our students will continue to receive an exceptional academic and corporate education, healthy and safe environment, that also supports social and needs for students. I really wanted to emphasize that last point, because we, in our planning, you know, we hired some staff to provide some support, some behavioral support, some social worker. Those needs, never anticipated, we have had the needs before this. So also, voters approved the capital reserve and repair reserve, so things like the Cato East roof, a new boiler at Cato West, which stuff we reported, I noticed today, might be in place this summer. SED is moving up their assignment, you know, they've been, not that much work has been going on, so they were able to catch up on lots of the turnaround time for some four weeks. So, yeah, so we should be able to perhaps get the boiler work done before September, maybe.
We'll go with you.
Yeah, exactly, right, so that's a great time. But we also approved the renovation of the art room to create the multipurpose room. So these are just really good things for kids, good things for our grounds and our facilities. We were also able to approve that repair reserve, and, right, so it lights up, but we'll be able to address that in a week. Within the election, we also had three residents run for two of our seats. Pat Arsalanian, who's here tonight, welcome, Pat, because he's the president, and Mary Lynn Hope will return as the vice president, she will return again in July. Sadly, though, Brian, just at this table, right, just at this table.
You can't get rid of me now.
But Brian has been a dedicated board member for a number of years, but, I mean, on your service of for the board, Brian, you were so, found a tough love, and just at every event for the kids, I mean, constantly texting me all hours of the night, what happened here, how did this go, I wasn't able to be there on landing, I want to know how the kids did, did we get the big win, what's the score? If you couldn't be at the game, but we were at many of those sporting events, you're reading to children, just, I was in attitude and encouragement. I know people were really sad that we wouldn't, you know, we need to make an eight-point.
To honor our sixth grade moving up to junior high. And we had most of the Cacho East staff all spread out on the sidewalk, all the way from the first group of the bus all the way to the end, um, to celebrate this important milestone for kids. Parents, kids were popping out of windows, the sunroof, all the cars were decorated, so they were screaming with excitement. Dr. Devine can't be here tonight, um, to speak about it, but it was such, you know what I gotta say? I think we're doing a car parade next year. I'm just saying. Like I talked about how serious the sixth grade moving up ceremony is and, you know, loads are edgy and everybody's like trying to get there on time. So many families were out and just having a ball and just, it, everyone was just such a nice thing. And again, they watched their video ceremony afterward. Barbara was able to speak to the kids, myself, Sean stood on the front steps with people moving off, obviously doing his speech. And what was really nice about the car parade was though, Tretty and Mr. Schmidt were here in high school, so the car parade went from Cacho East to here and there are balloons here and everything and some cupcakes and stuff. So it was a fun day. It was really nice.
And the basket.
And then we have a new, yes, Cacho East mascot that's gonna get some clothes. It was a lot of fun. Today, we started field day at the elementary schools. This is a really big event. It's two days long. And whole entire school set up into blue and yellow teams. They were all posted on the district website. Again, Megan Kupfermark like went to town on the website and all the events and she's been working closely with Paul Elwood on setting this up. So we sent home balls to the kids. Mr. Haas helped me, but this, um, sending balls home to the kids in preparation for field day, we had 500 balls on a school bus. I was crazy, but the kids were there, just couldn't wait to have.
That's America's Pennsylvania.
But it was like just nice to have so many parents being involved in this now, kids, teachers, you have to post your part of your event and, um, you gotta work that way and they're keeping track of the points I've seen them running today, so. Really nice. If you haven't noticed, I'm asking you and our community to drive by this high school and those test courts. The parents of the senior class under the coordination of Jean Horns provided a banner. Each child out there, so those banners are not just purchased, those were donated and parents raised over $4,000 to have that money, to create a banner for each and every child in our class. It is an incredible display. These fine young people who have just been in short weeks are going to be off to new experiences. And fortunately, all of them, they had parents, teachers and everybody's teacher both guiding and supporting them along the way. But we can't wait to see how those things that were off and, uh, I'm getting a little teary eyed, but after the vote, left the vote yesterday and Friday, I had to do a quick U-turn. I saw all the banners, uh, and like two of the girls were in their jeans and I called Mr. Tretty and I was like, this looks amazing. And I knew Mr. Tretty and Mr. Tretty and, uh, some of the custodians were able to get it up. Time for, um, showing ceremonies on Monday. So, uh, Sean, thank you so much for taking the time and making sure it was open.
It was my pleasure.
And also some of those little, like little, you were able to do a highlight on every child on the website. So I wanna thank President Chapman, uh, helping that and Sean and have the kids. Like where are they going in September? What are their plans? What's their favorite memory? Uh, just really neat stuff. So I, I know families like our, our Facebook. Watch or really appreciate the bad. But, uh, we're happy to announce that we had a first place for Cape Town National Lab winner. To be able to achieve this is, I'm not gonna, this is. We had the kindergarten winner. June Rosseto earned this honor by designing a project about catching bubbles, where he explored qualities that makes bubbles pop on dry or wet surfaces. Mrs. Kupfermark, I mean, I think she must have sent us a hundred pictures. She was over the moon to here and that a kid elevated to this level. And she's like, when have we ever had this? Like, did I get that? And then here she's like, we're so excited to be on kindergarten. She's scrolling through the emails and if anybody else got another first place, we're like, we'll take the kindergarten winner. We'll accept that. So we were really so happy. Next week, um, Sean is going to host a virtual award and scholarship ceremony, with administrators and staff driving around to the students. And we're, I wanna thank Mrs. Spinnigan for doing the same. Through the elementary awards to students and acknowledge each child, uh, along the way. So it was just really so incredible. I wanna personally thank, uh, Helen Corso, Debbie Hickox, Katie Glugory, Lydia Burns and Carol Harmer for all the work they've done through the years to create wonderful programs and experiences for student staff and families and their roles in the PTSA. All outgoing parents, Helen Corso has been the president for a number of years. She's just done an incredible job with Debbie, um, on her side. I know that it's very bittersweet for them to end on this note, but. Outreach and their tenure attitude, they were always at the ready, no matter what, just coming up with all kinds of things, good for kids. When I say like good for kids, all kids, like they've always worked, they've, in fact, each and every. I came on board to get their outreach to me and partnership and we set up, uh, meetings every six or so weeks and really been a great team. They will all be truly missed but not forgotten. Some of the programs they put in place over the years will still carry on. Helen ensured that those committees are set up, that she has people in place and that they're skill achieving. I think created the agendas for the record. So we're gonna welcome Amy Decheck and Natalie Tomroy, um, for taking over as co-president. And, uh, I've already reached out to talk to them a little bit about our, um. So also on the agenda tonight is the acceptance of the budget vote and the propositions and also our new board of trustees. But, uh, I wanna thank the community for supporting the budget and the propositions. As you know, we're the budget, 1,660 to 700. Which is really 16% pass rate. With this vote of confidence, our students will continue to receive an exceptional academic and cooperative environment, a healthy and safe environment that also supports social and needs for. I really wanted to emphasize that last point because we were in our planning, you know, we hiring some staff to provide some support, some behavioral support, some social worker. Those needs, never had anticipated. We have the needs before this. So also voters approved the capital reserve and repair reserve. So things like the Cacho East roof, the new boiler at Cacho West, which Doug and I reported on, I noticed today, right? The summer, SED moving up their assignment, you know, they've been, not that much work has been going on, so they were able to catch up on lots of the turnaround time for so many four weeks. So, yeah, so, so we should be able to perhaps get the boiler work done before September. Maybe. Yeah, exactly, right? So that's a great time. But we also approved the renovation of the art room to create the multipurpose room. So these are just really good things for kids, good things for our grounds and our facilities. We were also able to approve that repair reserve and, uh, so it lights up. We'll be able to address that in a year. Within the election, we also had three residents run for two of our seats. Pat Arsalanian, who's here tonight, welcome Pat. And Mary Lynn Hope will return, uh, as the vice president. She will return again, um, in July. Sadly though, Brian, it's not at this table, right? Just at this table.
You can't get rid of me now.
But Brian has been a dedicated board member for a number of years, but I mean, on your service of for the board, Brian, you were so bound to tuck along and, uh, just at every event for the kids, I mean, constantly texting me all hours of the night, what happened here? How does it go? I wasn't able to be there on landing. I wanna know how the kids did. Did we get the big win? What's the score? If you couldn't be at the game, but we were at many of those sporting events, you're reading to children, just positive attitude and encouragement. I know people were really sad that we wouldn't, you know, we need to make an eight board seat or something there to make room. But again, you also, your role in Eastern Southern Coliseum, you served in that role and you took that very seriously. And I know a lot of that work in your, some of the Coliseum about equity for all children, that really made a difference and, um,
I am honored. Uh, it's been a blessing to serve the district for the time I have and I couldn't have chosen a better group of people. I really, in my heart, tried to serve as many of our kids as I could and I think I was successful in that. More to remember our kids and all their needs and to try to take care of them as much as they can. I think that we are doing that. A long time, I think we're on the right path and a large part due to Jill, our superintendent. And I'm glad that I was an educational partner with you and with the rest of the board. And I think I, I've reached out to all of the board members and I think I made a connection to everybody. So I've been honored by that connection. I've tried to be a bridge builder and I think I built some bridges and I think we're gonna last for some good time. So I appreciate that. And I, the things that I've tried to do, I don't think they're, they're done. So I hope to continue to do the work that I've been called to do. I wish that for everybody here that they feel it's a calling. We have some very important work to do and we're doing it. We've gotta continue to do it. And this board in particular is a high functioning board and it must continue to function for the sake of the kids and our community and the taxpayers that rely on us. I've done some of the best work in the community on this board and I'm sad to leave it, but hopefully since the bridges I tried to build, I can walk over the bridge to return to you. But I will just, thank you very much.
The senior, uh, um, in that culture diversity committee started, um, prior to my time here. And we're doing some good work, just had a meeting. Through this whole pandemic and issues that are going on in society right now, we felt it really important that we continue to have a meeting. And, uh, we had a number of teachers. Were invited, but I think they were at, uh, Sean, I think they were at your car parade or something that was going on and maybe you were giving out earbuds. But we didn't get a lot of kids on the call, but it was good. Got a lot of teachers to talk, saying like that we still have a lot of work to do. Brian was on that call, uh, and Jennifer. So I think it's important that, you know, stay involved. So we'll get back to the budget vote. We had about 2,500 ballots turned and, uh, this was like a piece of cake, you know, to do a turnaround like a budget and do the entire thing and ask them to take it out. It's nothing, like we just snapped our fingers. Well, really it wasn't. It was Kathy, uh, Gilliard, who along the way like stayed the course, kept her cool. We get guidance document one minute, next day we get hot off the press popping in, there's another email and that, things have changed. So Kathy, amazing grooming and she got.
If she needs to make it.
Well, I had that. I was like, oh. She prevented the success of this project. Kathy, the fed said, we can be cool. Except for one day. Well, so let me talk for that. I mean, so through this pandemic, she hasn't, we look at her calendar today. I'm gonna talk a lot, so, um, you know, we will, we may have some time there. But in the future, we will spend some time reviewing year-end expenses, including savings and under spent codes within the 1920 budget. I expect that Mr. Backy and I will be making recommendations for the board to consider. And taking one that we could have this possible state aid cut that we've been talking about in the past few months. But potentially lowering the tax levy and, um, even further do some savings during this COVID period. So, um, I hate to say that, it's a good thing, but at the same time, you know, it's unfortunate our kids couldn't play in sports and some other things certainly couldn't happen. But, you know, we do have some savings, so we'll, we'll, um, make smart decisions. And, um, we'll try to close out the votes. For Frank, just finished the budget and we go start to the audit. That's a very time consuming process, uh, but in August we'll be able to have a greater number. We are starting, we're implementing some reopening plans, uh, our reopening plans. We haven't received guidance from the governor yet on what those, um, reopening plans must include. Um, we're hearing a July 15th date, but there's nothing that, um, says that's definitive at this time, however. Sort of, you know, what those plans must include, so things like, uh, so we had an echo main that we're paying attention to, including building procedures, arrival and dismissal, health and wellness, education, students and staff, instructional programming decisions, staffing considerations, preparing stakeholders for attendance protocols, facility use and cleaning, sanitation protocols. So our administrative has been assigned one of those areas and focused on that. We kind of have team captains and assistant for us. And all the guidance documents and ever changing guidance documents. As well, I am sitting on a team of, uh, superintendents. My area of focus is the instructional, um, decisions that we're providing guidance to our colleagues, I'm co-chairing that committee. Very helpful, the work of the superintendents will be helpful for those guidance documents and all of those other areas that are working on. Many of our administrators have attended workshops and were in times with experts and they've been able to inform some of those decisions. That poor Kathy just kinda listened to, I was not just large prepping for this, kinda listened to some of that advice that's been out there to help us with actual monitor. Getting kids into the building. Very exciting, uh, in time. Yes, we, and I'm sitting and happy of some, um, regular decisions that along those lines. Jen, I think we're gonna speak a little bit about some of that work and that. But we're looking to collect some data from our parents and teachers about processes and strengths of kids and areas that need might need more. Doing some of that work right now. But as our administrative team begins to develop these plans, we're reaching out to the MCTA, the CSEA, and as I already said, to just kind of get some info along the way. From when we need to finalize everything. So finally, um, I wanna say there was some retirement events Sean acknowledged a little bit that for, you know, without kids, but we also had a really nice car parade for her yesterday. That went from church over to school and people were able to send cards and messages. Mary Baldwin, Karen Kraus are retiring for Cacho East and Monday there will be a car parade of the caregivers with Mary Baldwin on Monday over Cacho East, the last day of school. So really sweet things going on. Really, there are not enough words to express my gratitude to our staff, teachers, custodial. Well, the techs, the TAs, the nurses and clerics have been helping us get through this very challenging time. Matt Cacho showed his true colors by working together, stepping up, pitching in and really truly going above and beyond. Spent a lot of time talking about these individuals, but they certainly had a team of the figures really guiding this work and urging them and even if everything together. So it's been a true team here, um, with the staff. But I wanna thank our parents. Our parents were very patient with us. They became teachers, teacher assistants, lunch monitor, school nurse. They became a tech assistant, you know, in that time. Parents really have learned a lot of technology very quickly overnight. Jerry and our team, like, did a great job supporting that, but, um, our parents really didn't. I wanna say you were the peanut butter to our jelly. So they were really, uh, we're very grateful to them for being such a good partner and also just encouraging us. They sent so many nice notes and that connection. And I just wanna thank our community. You know, on tonight's agenda, we have recognized those people who made food donations and I know, sure I miss people on that list, but we tried to take down every name of food or would tell us there. There were a lot of, um, anonymous donations left on that doorstep. So I wanna recognize, you know, all those people. We were able to provide daily breakfast, lunches and many dinners to families. I tried to calculate it, but we sent over and then all the boxes have pulled out, uh, in the past three months. Rafael Morales, our liaison, honestly, did most of the work with some few L, or a few Ls each week. He took the shopping, getting the boxes, although I just sent security out to the liquor stores to get the boxes. We need some more of those days, Ron. Yeah, they had two boxes, so I'm not. So, but, uh, really, I mean, it was a lot of work. I mean, even the guys pulling up at 1:15 in the morning with getting the stuff from the refrigerators and stuff like that. But these are things that the community really needs to know. He was able to secure a $5,000 grant. Partnership with, uh, two, one of the provisions, they were able to apply for the grant and but that's really through Rafael's connection and making that connect, sticking with it. Also this week, we found out that he was able to register us for, um, feeding kid program. Not everybody could get accepted. Have lunches for every child on Mondays and Wednesdays, which is when our food pantry will be open. Summer, families to come up and/or we will drive to them for those families. To receive. To receive food. He was also able to connect us with Island Harvest, but I would say maybe the past month, we've been getting donations from Island Harvest and mostly that is all fresh food and vegetables. So though, I mean, cute boxes of potatoes, onions, celery and carrots, apples, pears. I forgot my box is like, I was like a week. Anyway, Rafael, the TA, the custodian, they moved out and it's still, uh, operating. For this, like, I wanna thank the entire team, our hearts, like this is what it's all about and, um, still runs on Monday morning. Husbands come along. Really nice effort. Monday will be our last official lunch drive with this. So we will be thanking the bus drivers and all the people that were involved with Little Breakfast. Outside for Monday morning. But again, I just wanna thank the community that everything has been a part of this. We're coming to the end, but. I think that's it.
Are wonderful. How exciting, how exciting. You know, the more we hear, the more we appreciate the fact that we live here and people care about one another and work together and make it happen. And it's just very inspiring, very, very inspiring. Thank you for that.
Do you have audit finance?
Yes, I do. So the audit and finance committee met last week. We had a video conference call with the external auditors, the Bonadillo Group. The partners, Tim Doyle and Heather Briggs, were on the call. Those are the two leads on our audit. We discussed the external audit, which is underway and should be completed late summer, early fall. Uh, we also discussed the transportation contract for this year and next. Uh, we've been talking about that a lot lately. There's a disagreement between the district and the vendor on the terms of the contract and what is owed. So we're trying to resolve that now, working with council. Uh, we also discussed the current year budget. As Jill touched on, there's a lot of moving parts, but it looks like that, you know, the district is actually saving money, um, due to not having the spring sports season as well as not having as much expense just to operate the school with the students at home. Um, so it looks like there's gonna be significant savings there versus the budgeted expenses. And then lastly, we discussed continuing purchase orders and new procedures that were put in place to help reduce those. Uh, the confirming purchase orders was an area of concern that has come up in past audits. So just the business office trying to streamline the processes to, you know, reduce those going forward. Um, so I'll turn it back to you, Barbara.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, we met and went over a list. I, I think everybody on the board, right, if we on board, get a copy of this, there will be email, um.
Yeah, we're putting it together, but everyone will get a copy.
Tom put through a extensive list of summer programs that, that we passed and pregnant issues. Which is, was impressive. Tom, Tom Kelly did a, did a very good job there. Uh, the interior door cap project will be started immediately. If it didn't start this week, it's starting next week. The air conditioning project came in $300,000 under our, our expectation. That's a.
Good job, Doug.
Our buyer expectations, uh, all passed and filed and approved by New York State. We discussed setting up a, a repair fund for the track. Right, that was your idea. I guess a good idea.
And then Greg said it's a little bit ways down the road, but we are, we, we're aware of it and we know how much it would cost and.
It's, uh, a hundred thousand or something.
Right.
And we should, we should be setting up some money every year, put in a special fund. So when it comes to that, we can, we can do that.
I think it's at, uh, I prefer, um, sorry, 2023.
Right.
This is anticipated repairs coming up, but, um, we continue to set aside about $10,000 every year.
Um, that's basically it. Uh, I don't know, did you want me to go through the list of summer projects? You all gotta get a copy of that, so.
Yeah, I just wanna say that, that, uh, the Cacho East, we put up the fence.
We didn't discuss that last month. I, I don't know, but the fence, you don't know. Everyone's got a nice shed.
No, but I do wanna say that the, the air conditioning and the door project are from the, the um, capital reserves that the public approved. Um, so as we've explained to the public, that it does take time to build your SED approval. Uh, we mentioned the $3,000 savings. It really shows the public that spend the money really well and we really went back and forth on what the, or this project.
And does that money stay in the upper third though?
It does.
Yeah.
So then could you use it for the traffic?
Capital reserve, you have to spell out what you're spending the money on. So if, I mean, you could eventually ask the public.
You can't spend it without the order of.
No, 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 I understand that. I'm just wondering if you could just.
But I, I think, uh, it'd be good to have a separate fund. We know that this money is set aside just for the track. Maybe I'm gonna put on something else, but when that time comes, it's, it's, uh.
For the, uh, within the air conditioning project, why some of the costs came in lower. Questions about some of the pipes and when the heating they were, um, set up so that should be air conditioning down the road. They could, uh, so that was fortunate. So they brought that down there. But also just shopping. In spring, the parts of the Thank you. Alternative diversity growing, hold on, Doug, you want to just?
Is it going to be done? It's gonna be resurfaced? This, this summer?
Yeah, so that's right next to the park and they're really in this repair, so. So it was not projected that we were going to do that, but we had some savings from some projects, so we really, important that we addressed some of the our properties, our thing.
And they were in dire need of repair, right?
Because the baskets were, the baskets themselves were worked on a couple of years ago. I think we have to go back and look at it again. The services, services are being done.
As Jill mentioned, we had a nice meeting. Was it this week or last?
Right, or not? I think it was Tuesday.
Okay, that's fine. It would be on Monday and as Jill said, we brought the committee back of Culture University two thousand seventeen and we really have hit the ground running. We've made some strides and as I have spoken here many times, to me, the most important voice is the student voice. And as Jill said, jokingly, there was one student, but she made a powerful impact. She's one of our bilingual students and she just was telling her story authentically and honestly. And that's the thing that I'm most proud of with the Culture University program is that the kids are authentically telling us their story. And they're asking us to listen and they really want action when things are not right. So that's the part that I have really been blessed to witness and to foster. Is what are the kids dealing with in our school and how can we help them to deal with it? And really the amount of all district stakeholders from Andrea and I, they're our counselor and teachers and guidance counselors and teachers aides, and at one point we had custodial staff giving their perspective. So I'm so proud that I have a small part of that to continue and I ask humbly for that to continue. Even if, you know, you know, some people thought I spearheaded this, really I got out of the way once it started. And I'm so glad the kids were like, well, what's my committee doing? What have I done? Let's talk about this and let's talk about that. So the kids really have an investment in that committee and I feel of all the committees, that has the strongest student voice. And I ask that the board continue that strongly with our involvement with it and fostering what the kids do. And the ideas that came up from the meeting or, you know, different strategies to continue what our diversity caucus has been. Jill mentioned workshops that she has taken part of and I have taken part of where you deal with your internal issues of bias. And that enables you to help others or a district or a community to deal with it. That if you can't authentically look at your own issues, then how can you say what should be done and what shouldn't be done? And then I'm so proud that of all the districts in New York or in some county, however you want to look at it, very few districts have a Culture and Diversity Committee, I believe it does. And it's done the work and it's done our work and it's done good work. So I'm proud that when we see social issues like George Floyd's death or we see racial issues, that we are honestly dealing with what our issues are in this district and I hope that that work continues.
Very nice. We have, what I think is really important, what we had several teachers actually asked experiences and invest for more training area of teaching. Just addressing some of the things that might come up in classes, so they asked. But one of our students reached out to student, to ask to do a student demonstration. And although we can't do graduation, certainly can't demonstration to get there on school campus, so tried to come up with some alternatives. And I expect the student, what's that student that says teach peace? And she's trying to get some other kids involved, so. And Sean, I don't know if you have any update where she is with this?
Um, yes, I met with her this morning and we are creating a schedule. She's going to reach out to students that she knows have a similar interest as her. And we will be putting the mural up in front of the school, in front of the high school. We're going to do something that we can take in at night. And she came up with a really nice design and so I'm creating a schedule next week where two students at a time, again, because of social distancing, can come up and work on the mural. The student had suggested half hour increments. I'm not much of an artist, she's a really good artist, so I said, okay, if you think that's enough time, that works. And so you will begin to see that work take place next week. And I think they should need about three days to complete it. So that'll be out on the front of the building next week and it'll be there in time for graduation, which is our goal.
Custodians for help, we got some supplies and things and we're going to pick up some plywood and plenty of wood for that. I think custodial team could help with that.
We met this past Monday and we discussed the Chromebooks and students are keeping their Chromebooks with the exception of the seniors. Students will continue to have access to online programs and resources on the Cuchoe East website. And we also discussed about the assurance of our we discussed technology plan, it's currently being worked on. We discussed summer material, the high school students have worked to give extra support and fill learning gaps. Grades K through six, math and literacy packets to we discussed summer assignments for seventh and twelfth grade for independent all grades K through twelve to increase their independent reading. We discussed summer curriculum development. Student, teachers will continue to work on work on for new courses there, curriculum over there. They're going to also look into CSEs and exploring that curriculum technology over the and we discussed for the world language program. We will not be running French one at the secondary level here and also for grades classes, the Spanish classes will not be
Yeah, no, no, they're going to, yeah, no, so just for kindergarten in the fall, we won't be picking up with the Spanish program, but they'll start in September, I mean, in January, including in January. One less section, one less period. And same thing in the first grade, they will be starting, I think, with one time, Jen. And then pick it up a little bit more in January. But we really do close some of those gaps and might go back so there's only so many hours in the school that it'd be slipping around the Spanish program at all, at all, every week, but.
We also discussed summer school for special education and that will be running. Some students will attend in person, other students and virtually. Vocational students will be working at our community offices. We discussed tech books for next year. Physics, psychology, tech books. There will be math resource. We discussed professional development, teachers at the elementary and secondary level, personal on virtual instruction. And T for the ELA, EMA. We can, this also works with
Yeah, so we plan to do summer remediation sessions. I'm going to have the to talk about gospel Saturday workshops and perhaps some evening meetings. Where we could provide some gap closing opportunities or just shorting up some skills. You know, skip going back to what's on the standards over the year before that evening. Again, those programs will be optional, but we'll have to talk about, have that interest in, you know, have to be able to, but I really, that's important to be able to talk or something. Overward kids, because again, get mind full, they may have been out of school for six months, you know, sitting in a seat like that, so there'll be some attention. For that long and stamina and how we will provide practice on some technical occasions, we're needing.
Next is negotiations personnel. We have on the agenda tonight for approval, and we've already discussed this, so I won't come back and begin, but A is to approve the MOA agreement between the Admon Association and the district. Then policy and legislative outreach, there's nothing to report out at this moment in time, but again, going forward, I think I mentioned this last time. We'll probably have some policies regarding, you know, the distance learning at all to, you know, to present, but at this moment, we haven't addressed that. Now on to new business. I just want to say thank you to the community at the donations. It's overwhelming, the generosity, but again, our community, so thank, thank you to all the ones who donated and the ones we know about and the ones that we haven't. We truly appreciate your generosity. So I'd like a motion for the approval of donation items A through C.
Go.
Discussion.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes, bottom of our hearts. All in favor?
Yeah, aye, aye.
Opposed? Questions carried? Onto personnel items, I'd like for the approval of personnel items A through X.
Go.
Did you take? Discussion?
I'm abstaining from Q.
Okay.
Can I just have a clarification on the description of summer work? I'm looking at EF and Q. It just says six days of pay for summer.
Yep, so for item E, Marielle and Danberg, we expect her to be helping different items, one looking at our literacy program for the fall. E, perhaps to maybe some work with teachers over the summer. Looking at scheduling, things along those lines, Kelly Pregering. Counselors, work with extra days to set up a schedule or in this case, we'll be kind of looking at some of the social motion. I'm going to have to come out of surveys with parents and then make that part for these days will be I didn't even share them, I'm sorry. She actually received up to a ten thousand dollar grant. I think that I earned a ten thousand dollar grant for this water, water conservation project. There's a lot of work with the federal government involved in this and they're going to come out. They're actually doing site visits, Kelly is involved in it, so it's a pretty really comprehensive project. Money to be quite visited. I have no idea, gee, it's hard for, but some of that will be around preparing that project. Some of it will be doing work with major that I've been missing out on. Just so that I can come work for precision and again, just doing some work to get schools up. She also needs to work with
Okay, so I have a second and it's for the group of the personnel items A through X, so all in favor?
Yeah.
Opposed?
I did want to just note on that, that we are hiring a new on the agenda is a nurse for the high school. That sounds so good. They're going to be from time on Friday and Monday this week, break down to the wire. So that they can just have some conversation, trying to get that high school.
Okay. Onto resolutions. Resolution higher. Please.
Second.
Discussion?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Well, Jill, did we get any questions from?
Do you have any?
I didn't see many. And a motion to
You made a motion to Jen.
Is that right?
No discussion necessary, all in favor?
Yep.
Opposed? Questions carried? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good team for logging in.
Were you asleep?
Good night. Good night, everybody.
That's true. Good night, everyone.